Millican?
Here.
Patelco?
Here.
Pitts?
And Swan?
Here.
Thank you. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there's no changes proposed.
All right, and I'll note for everybody, because we discussed it at a previous meeting, there was going to be a rezoning this evening for property on Stadium Drive. That is not on the agenda. The applicant has requested that be postponed until at least March. So we might have that coming in the future. It may not. We'll just have to see as that comes forward. But that is not on discussion this evening. So no changes to the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Swan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Patelco. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Also in our packets were the minutes of the October 9th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Were there any comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the October 9th Planning Commission minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion by D'Senzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Swan. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Any communications and announcements?
No communications or announcements.
And there are no public hearings, so we will move right to discussion items. Number one, PC 2023-08, the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, we'll have, the capital improvement plan was included in the agenda packet and the Director of Public Services, Director James Baker's here to give a presentation on it. So I will let him start that.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Millican, and I would like to thank all members of the Planning Commission for giving us this opportunity to present for your approval of the City Commission annual, excuse me, the annual capital improvement plan for submittal to the City Commission. Next slide, please. So this year, the capital plan that we're going to present to you kind of focuses in kind of three broad areas. Those areas are further broken out within the plan. That includes general fund, capital improvement plan. If you look at the actual plan sheets in front of you, each department's kind of listed out, so you can see some of the details by department of what's happening there. Streets are broken out into major streets and local streets within your plan, so you can kind of see all those by individual projects and street type. And then we also have separate plans for both water and wastewater. In general, you know, these plans really focus on, you know, continuing to support the business units of the city. General Fund, there's a lot of just good governance work that's happening, you know, making improvements and things of that nature. Streets, we're, you know, continue to focus on our complete streets for all plan, as well as, you know, improving overall life cycle of the streets. And then water and wastewater, we've got, you know, some continued focus on several initiatives, which, you know, we'll get into and talk about here. Next slide, please. Here's a breakdown, kind of an overall bar chart of what the total capital plan comes in at. It's around $80 million for all funds. That's down slightly from last year. The all-in capital plan was about $100 million last year, so we're down about $20 million this year. That's mainly with some reductions in the major street fund and with water fund as well. So the drinking water investment plans for this year are slightly smaller than they were last year, and same with major streets. Next slide, please. So talking about, you know, just kind of general fund, again, there's project-specific breakdowns within your printouts there, but we didn't want to highlight some continued work with the farmer's market with the event building. So there's plans, dollars budgeted for that, work occurring at Milam and Verberg Park. And then there's some substantial dollars for a new software program for, that would replace our Eden system. That's how we kind of manage all of our electronic payments and budgeting. It all happens within Eden. So, you know, all the procurement and everything that happens at the city, all the invoicing. There's a whole lot of things that are tied to the Eden program, as well as other programs, such as payroll and everything else that feed into that. Cross-town facilities, the courts are going to be moving out of cross-town facilities, and the city will then occupy those spaces as well. So we have a number of city departments that are planning to move down to cross-town and occupy space that was formerly occupied by the courts. There's also some significant dollars and expenditures for public safety, for some safety equipment. That's actually time for them to renew all of their breathing apparatus. That's the mask and the oxygen tanks and things that they wear when they go into the fires. Next slide, please. So, you know, getting into streets, we've got some, you know, pretty exciting things happening this year. We plan to start work on Mishakau. That work will take, you know, two years. It's a two-year process. That's going to open the door to work on, you know, Kalamazoo Ave, which is all part of our, you know, complete streets for all strategy and the overall goal to convert downtown Kalamazoo to two-way street. So, you know, we'll see some significant progress on that front. We also have some major construction projects happening on Cork Street and Westonage from Cork Street up to Vine. And then we also have White's Road from Oakland to Westonage, Inkster Bridge. That's a local street project, but that's up for construction this year. That's been kind of long in the waiting for that one. And then Ransom, we just opened Ransom back up from Wall Bridge to Pitcher Street. So you can go see that. That's now open to the public. And that work is going to continue and extend west from Pitcher all the way down to Westonage with work occurring next year. We also have Howard Street from Oakland Drive to Westonage, and we've got a bunch of sidewalks that are going to be improved and replaced for the safe routes to school plan. Next slide, please. Getting right into wastewater, we've got a three-year project that's coming to an end. It's our tertiary treatment process. That's the last process in the train. We've got preliminary treatment, primary treatment, secondary treatment, and then tertiary treatment. So this facility will be going online this May, and that will coincide nicely with our Public Services Week, where every May we open all of our facilities, invite members in the public to come in and into our facility. So we'll have a new treatment process up and running, and everybody can take a look and tour that. We're also continuing our work with interceptor upgrades. Those are the very large pipes that convey, you know, kind of sewage to the treatment plants, kind of like the highway system, but in sewage terms. We're going to be doing some trenchless rehabilitation work, include sewer lining and manhole replacements. And we're also going to continue our work with odor improvements. Next slide, please. We've got some, you know, again, great investments with water. We've got, right now, we're out to bid with our optimized corrosion control project. So that's something that we've been working on for a number of years now. We now have 400 days to implement that, once we receive our permit from Eagle. We're also continuing our lead service line replacement work. If you click on that link, you can actually go to a map. We won't do it here, but you can on your own if you have access to this presentation. One important note for next year is that we're actually, we'll be putting the 5,000th lead service line replacement in the ground. So that's an exciting, real exciting milestone for us. That means that we're halfway done with all lead service line replacement. It's our goal to be 100% done with lead service line replacement by 2037. So hitting this goal now in 2024 gives us some confidence that we're well on our way to meet that goal. Some important notes are, is likely changes coming down from EPA for the lead program. There were a lot of changes under Michigan law in 2018, when Michigan introduced the 2018 Lead Copper Rule, which kind of required a whole bunch of different things to happen, including lead service line replacement and our optimized corrosion control program, which we're into right now. EPA is now looking to further increase the rules and regulations governing lead. So one of the things that EPA is looking at instituting is a 10-year replacement for all lead services. So we were replacing lead services on a pathway to get that done in 20 years. So depending on when this legislation comes down and is enacted into law in Michigan, that could impact our schedules, and we may find ourselves having to increase our performance yet again, and further increase our pace to comply with that. We also are continuing to deal with PFAS. PFAS is still showing up out in the townships with contaminated wells, so we're extending municipal water system out to reach those customers. And we also have stations, such as Station 5, which will be implementing PFAS treatment at beginning in 2025. So that station's going to receive a full-scale iron removal, manganese removal, and then PFAS removal. In addition to that, we also have two stations, that's Station 17 and 18, which we shut down when Michigan passed the PFAS MCLs, because those stations would have been unable to meet that. And we, at some point, will need to restore that system capacity, and we'll have to either implement new stations or consolidate and increase well field output. And that's, I believe, my last slide, so I can open the floor for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions on the capital improvement plan?
My first question would be, the capital improvement plan, I believe it mentioned, but just to clarify, this is non-recurring spending in all of these areas. So this is sort of like one-time or less frequent approvals. This is somewhat separate from the normal city budget. Is that true?
I think that's the overall goal of the capital plan. You know, I will tell you that there are some things like lead service line replacement, where we're just going to keep doing it every year for 20 years. And so those projects will move around. So, you know, once we do the work at one home, that, you know, that's it for, you know, forever essentially. But that work does continue. So, yeah, these projects are kind of independent projects that, once we complete them, the idea is that we shouldn't have to ever come back and do that again. However, due to the nature of the work, a lot of the same themes and a lot of the same things happen over and over and over again.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Oh, I also did want to highlight, in the, I believe, the general fund, it mentioned heavy equipment and some other stuff like that. What exactly does that entail?
Yeah, so that's primarily looking at our streets department, which would include things like dump trucks, snow plows, street sweepers, backhoes, front-end loaders, you know, those sorts of big machines that aren't funded by the water department. The water department and wastewater department also have heavy equipment line item budgets, and they would buy their own dump trucks and loaders and everything of that nature. And I don't know specifically, but usually that line item would also include fire apparatus. So if there's a bigger purchase that fire has to make, that would be within that line item as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Just for some of the newer members, just to reiterate what was in the staff report, the reason we have this presentation tonight is a requirement of the state law. We are sort of the resident experts in the master plan, if you will. So we look at this capital improvement plan as a way to say, okay, does this match the master plan? And then we are to give a recommendation to the City Commission based on that, and then they take that recommendation upon their, with all the other stuff they have, when they look to make their final vote and approval on the capital improvement plan. So tonight, we're asked to recommend approval of the capital improvement plan to the City Commission, or make a recommendation, I guess I should say, to the City Commission. And that's sort of the lens within which we view this. So to open discussion, I would look for a motion on a recommendation to the City Commission on the capital improvement plan.
All right. I'll move that we recommend the capital improvement plan.
Recommend?
Oh, sorry. Recommend to approve the, sorry, that we approve the capital, sorry.
That's good.
The capital improvement plan.
Great. All right. So I have a motion recommending approval to the City Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Patelco, second by Swan. Any discussion on the motion?
I would just say that I appreciate that there are, as the street work continues, that, you know, we're looking at some major streets. With the complete streets program, I know that that is a big part of the master plan. And I also appreciate a lot of the work that's going on in the environmental realm, not just with the lead replacement, as mentioned, but with the improvements of the wastewater treatment plan, the PFAS, and the odor control. All of things are very, very important. So I like the list of what's in store for 2024.
Sorry, I've been on the whole time. I echo that and also wanted to add that I think there's good distribution of improvements throughout the city, and I like to see that. And I'm excited for all the work you're going to take on. Thank you.
Other comments or discussion?
I had one issue I wanted to raise, and I'm looking at my other Planning Commission members for potential advice on this. There are multiple city expenditures in the capital improvement plan that do pertain to my work in everyday life, and I didn't know if there was a process where I might consider recusing myself from this discussion. I don't know if that would be expected of me, or what exact procedure would be in that case.
You're not, so my thought would be, and we have staff here that can weigh in, but you're not approving anything. You're not approving an expenditure. You're not making any guidance one way or the other. It's sort of, this is what we're thinking about doing, and you're saying it, weighing it against the master plan or not. So I would say, I think you're fine.
I figured as much. I just wanted to put it out there, just in case anybody had any concerns, but appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just weigh in here.
Please.
I agree with essentially what you've said. You, even though you may work in the field of certain projects here, we aren't dealing with a specific project. We aren't dealing with a situation where it can lead to compensation to you or to your employer necessarily. It's more general. I think disclosure of a potential conflict is a good thing for transparency, but I do not believe that you have a conflict in this instance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just a question, if I could. It makes perfect sense to me that it's not a conflict as well. Just wondered, as sort of a point of order, if there had been, should that have been brought up before the discussion? Or, just for the way you do things, I don't know.
I probably.
It could have been brought up before the discussion, at least before the vote. It's maybe, ideally, could be brought up before the meeting. And certainly, you know, I'm available here at the meetings or even phone call, email, to my office ahead of time just to check on these things, and certainly available for that. And then we know how to proceed. If there was a conflict, then we'd ask you to recuse yourself. Different communities handle a conflict differently. Either, I think traditionally, Kalamazoo is more head. People just sit at the dais and remain silent. In some instances, I've had people just get down and sit out in the lobby, or maybe even just leave the room while the vote is going on. But that's something we'll deal with in the event a conflict arises.
Perfect. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? We have a motion to recommend approval. I would just say I enjoy this presentation every year. It's nice to live in a community that invests in its infrastructure and keeps things maintained. So thank you. It's been impressive to see that come to this level over the last several years. Seeing nothing else, I think we'll probably need a roll call.
Burgess?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Millican?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item, our 2024 meeting schedule. Hard to believe we're ready for that. Do we need, first of all, do we need a motion or anything, or is this just sort of an FYI type of a?
I think a motion, second, and a voice vote would be good.
Voice vote, okay. Any immediate concerns or issues with this schedule? I don't see any. All right. Is there a motion, then, to approve the 2024 meeting schedule?
I'll move we approve the 2024 meeting schedule.
All right. Motion by Burgess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Swan. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Moving on, City Planner's Report.
Okay. There's a couple items, Chair Millican. An update for the Planning Commission, I've started working on an amendment, which will come in front of you, to the zoning ordinance, part of that transferring out of Appendix A into Chapter 50. And specifically, it's the Chapter 8 of the Appendix A zoning ordinance, which is the administration section, which is the rules and process for the, how the planning applications come in, variances, site plan review, sign permits, the rules, process for all of those things. Don't suspect significant changes, but looking at our site plan process and some processes day-to-day and how they've been run, and doing a refresher with the Enabling Act, to move that over and any, anything we think that looks to be adjusted, we would propose there. I would predict probably by the April meeting, you would see that, and there would be a presentation to the Planning Commission before that. Probably February, March, we'll probably look at the, if the rezoning is in March, that would probably not be a good time for it. But April's the target date to have that at a spot ready to vote. And with that is the lighting section of the zoning ordinance, which is a small part of Chapter 6. There was a lot of community discussion and feedback about lighting in the commercial amendments. So Justin Gish, who is the sustainability planner in our department, he's been doing some research, reaching out to other communities about lighting ordinance, and he's working with me to work on that. So we would move forward the administration section and the lighting section. So, if you guys have any thoughts or comments on that. And, trying to read my handwriting here. That's all that I have.
Thank you.
I just have a couple additional items. On Monday of this past week, at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, we had a guest speaker, Ryan Kilpatrick, who is the former Executive Director of Housing Next up in Ottawa County, Kent County area. He spent the day with staff to work through conversations on housing, specifically what incentives and programs are available to cities, how can we use them, how do we need to think about our zoning code to support housing, looking at, we are lucky enough to have quite a bit of data from the county housing documents. And so he helped us kind of think through a lot of those things. It's probably the first of many conversations. He was also at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and he spoke to City Commission. This meeting was recorded, and so you can watch it on the city's YouTube channel. And so that was this Monday, which I believe was the fifth Committee of the Whole Meeting. And I would encourage you all to take a look at it, because it was the fourth, thank you, I want to be accurate. Because in addition to the zoning changes that Bobby mentioned, to the current administrative section, we are going to start the residential code update. Now, staff has been spending quite a bit of time working with consultants to go through data, to understand how our districts are performing now, what do they look like, how many lots are in each district, and do some of that background detail work that we did before the commercial code as well. And so we have been spending some time working our way through that, and we'll be kicking that process off sometime this winter. And I imagine it'll be something similar to commercial. We'll have a series of meetings, we'll make some edits. We'll have some more meetings, make some edits, so forth, until we're at the point where we're ready to bring it forward for where we're ready to bring it forward for this body to review officially. There's a second presentation that is happening next week, on Wednesday, the 13th. There's a Housing Matters presentation, and this is a group that does monthly presentations focused on housing issues. This is also available online, or is a Zoom meeting. And if any of the planning commissioners are interested in watching it, please let me know, and I'll be happy to forward it on to you. The speakers are myself and Sherilyn Parsons, who is our community development manager. And we're gonna be talking about all things housing, from potential zoning code updates to our pre-approved plans that we're working on, to the programs that Sherilyn administers from HUD, home, community development block grants. And so it's kind of all things Kalamazoo and housing. And so that presentation will be the 13th. And again, if anyone is interested, I'm happy to forward you the link. And those are the remaining topics for us tonight.
All right, thanks. Any questions there on that? All right, then we'll move to the annual report to the planning commission from 2022.
Yep, that is, that is correct. It is the 2022 annual report. Largely, probably because of shifting roles early in the year here in the planning division, it's something we caught that, you know, every year we have to provide to the planning commission. I'd like to give credit to Beth Cheeseman for help bringing that back to my attention. So we put it here in the December meeting, it has all of the actions put in there, the site plans of significance that was done by the Site Planner View Committee from 2022. I'd be glad to walk you guys through it, or if you guys have any questions on it, whichever you prefer.
You guys want to be walked through, or you have any questions? My only question is, I can't believe I didn't realize it was 22 and not 23 before.
The 23 one will be much earlier.
We'll get two of them back to back. Yeah, there we go.
Is there anything you'd like to highlight from it?
No, I think, well, maybe I'm a little biased here because I manage the site plan process, but I, I thought there were some significant processes. If anybody's driving down I-94, since it's been opened, Zoetis looks much different. They've actually worked on a multi-year, multi-phase project in some of the, the big large building you see out there, and a lot of stormwater improvements out there were part of that project. If you drive south down Rose Street, you're seeing the walls go up at 530 South Rose. It's gonna be a multi-story senior housing that was a, a project approved. Also along 94 and Sprinkle is the, the K Rees's School. You're seeing the walls go up over there. Interestingly, and from what I gather from the cell tower companies, a lot of 5G conversions. So you see 21 cell antenna call locations. Oftentimes, a cell tower has multiple carriers. So you'll see, you know, that's why there's more applications than there are cell towers. So those were, and then 1802 East Main is wrapping up pretty soon here. That's the mixed-use building over there in the east side neighborhood. So I thought it was interesting to look back on, you know, those are big, complicated projects, and here we are, they're all moving along and becoming reality. And I thought the, the public participation plan was, was approved as well. And the, there was a presentation on the community sustainability plan, so some of those other visioning documents that the city works from came to fruition then as well.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for catching that, and thank you for completing it. Anything on the 23 site plan list? Anything from you, any questions from anybody? No? Okay. Then we will move into public comments. Public comments on non-agenda items. If anyone has public comments, please come forward, state your name, address, and let us know what you think. Oh, and if you're watching online, thank you. If you're watching online and you'd like to call in, now would be the time to call in. That phone number is 888-382-9556. And we'll pick you up in just a minute when we get done with this.
Hi, my name is Tammy Hibner. I live at 1314 East Alcott. I'm here because Mr. Tarani of Drive &amp; Shine was going to do a thing tonight, and he's, he's not doing it tonight, he's doing it in March sometimes, but he hasn't had his public meeting that he was supposed to chair. But I'm just bringing before the commission that there are countless people, they're not here tonight because that's not happening, but so many people are so worried about this, the possibility of a car wash going in on the corner of Drake and Stadium, the south west, southeast corner. And it's straight down to Asylum Lake. And there's no way he can build it up well enough to keep it from becoming a problem as far as polluting Asylum Lake. And we fought this battle back in 2020. There were 200 people here that told you guys, we don't want it. There's still so many people that don't want it, and we need to consider the harm that that could do to Asylum Lake and to, there's, there's so many car washes in that area, within two miles, there's like five car washes. So we really don't need that. And he's got three other car washes, one on Gull Road, one on West Main, and one on West Edge. He doesn't need another one. And I propose that we offer him, you know, a tax abatement if he's, would donate that property to the city. You know, maybe something like that. But there's that, and then there's the problem with graphic packaging and their pollution, polluting, and I don't even understand why they get a tax abatement or any subsidies or anything, because they are detriment to our, to our city and to our citizens. So many are being, you know, affected by pollution. I've got a lot of things on my mind. So really, what I would like to see the commission focus on is the health, the welfare, and the cleanliness, and the lack of pollution. We've got dumping, we've got problems with people that don't take care of their property, we've got problems with people dumping, and then we've got the toxic plant, and we've got Drive &amp; Shine. We need, we need a commission.
Thank you very much. I don't think, I don't think there's anybody else here, so is there anyone online?
Hold on one moment, and I will verify. I'm working on it, hold on, it's not answering for me. Hold on.
Quite the tone.
I apologize, commissioners, hold on one second. Sorry for the technical difficulties. We will be with the caller in just a minute.
It appears that the microphone is not connecting to the computer, such that the call-in, it won't connect for us. So we do have a caller on the line, but I fear that we are not gonna be able to get them through because of that setting issue. We can certainly give it another couple of, another couple seconds, and we can continue to try and, and look, but we have tried to troubleshoot it in all the normal ways, so I'm...
Do you want us to move on and have Commissioner Pradel give his comments while you maybe turn down the volume a little bit?
Why don't we do that? Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Chair Milliken.
Thank you for accommodating.
Do our best to remain flexible. Is it working? All right. Just start off by wishing a happy Hanukkah, those who celebrate. Had a chance to join a celebration across in Bronson Park here shortly before the meeting tonight, had a nice gathering out there, and I know they'll be out there each night celebrating another night of lighting, so I wanted to wish them a happy holiday. Also wanted to just make sure to mention, we, since we've last been together, we had our official swearing in of the 55th city commission. Want to welcome new city commissioner, Alonso Wilson, who joined commission, and Commissioner Gene Hess is now Vice Mayor Hess. So thank you to the voters who helped to bring us back here, and just wanted to make sure to, to mention that as well. Also, on December 1st, per the charter, we have our transmittal of our annual budget. Our fiscal year '24 proposed budget is a two-point, I'm sorry, $288 million budget. And you can learn more, and they have a very interactive version of that budget you can check out on kalamazoocity.org/budget. The public hearing for that is now scheduled for January 2nd, and then our, our hopeful action on that is on Tuesday, January 22nd. So if you get a chance to check that out. We also, as a commission, have a, a work session to kind of dive deeper into the budget next Monday, from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So I definitely encourage the public to engage and check that out, and learn more about our next large budget. Swan is wishing you all a very happy holiday, and we'll see you hopefully here back, safe and healthy in 2024. Thanks.
All right, give it one more shot here.
So we are gonna try it one more time and see if this works. And hopefully the caller is still on. They are, let's see. Apologies for the day, the delay, caller, you are on with the planning commission.
Oh, okay, thank you so much for, thank you so much for your diligence in troubleshooting that and getting me on. I, I won't take up the full three minutes, I just wanted to say thank you to the board for your perseverance in pushing through some of these downtown projects that have received a lot of pushback, like, like the new entertainment venue. You guys keep pushing for these things, I really appreciate it. I think we need more stuff downtown, bringing in the residents, and I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, 20 years of trying to push this project through, and multiple other projects that you guys have fought for. The downtown looks great, y'all are doing a wonderful job, and, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you. Was that it, or did another one come in?
I do not believe there's anyone else.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry for that delay.
Nope, that's, it's all right. Thank you. That, I guess it's not a public hearing. That ends public comments, planning commissioner comments. Any planning commissioners with comments this evening? No? All right, easy meeting. Wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season, and we will see you all in 2024. Thank you. Having completed the agenda, we are adjourned. Thanks.